Okay, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board to order at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, December 7. The first order of business is a public hearing on road naming. Sheep Mountain Road off Dover Hill Road, and I believe Michelle Mann is here from the Police Department to discuss this.
Yes, I am.
You have the floor.
So I'm not sure if Jeanette sent you the map where this proposed road is. It's going to service a residence in Dover and another in New Fane. And because there are two or more residences, it needs to have a name.
And this is a unique name to the town of Dover?
Yes, it is, and it was picked by the owners of the property.
Is there any discussion on this topic? Well, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to name Sheep Mountain. The exact address is 27 Dover Hill Road, DR 009A.
No, no, it's not 27 Dover Hill.
That's west, sorry. It's parcel ID DR 009A.
Yes.
Somebody make a motion?
So I make a motion that we name the newly created road that's just west of 27 Dover Hill Road that services or goes through the parcel DR 009A as Sheep Mountain Lane.
Any other comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
That will close the hearing, the road public hearing at 6:32. Thank you. Okay, general public comments. So as everybody probably notices, we have all messed up. There was a close call here in the building with a visitor, and we just want to be super cautious. So if anybody visits the Dover Town Office, masks are now required for all. Also, I'd like to clarify executive session with Linda Sherman. That session is to potentially hire an assistant, correct Joe? So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that that's what that executive session is for. Any other public comments? Yes, Scott?
I just wanted to basically acknowledge how awesome the Dover Library did with having Santa there and all the gifts and everything this past weekend. They did a really nice job, very well done, and so it's.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go on to number three, the Police Department, and an update on dispatching.
So this was a meeting with Commissioner Sherman, Department of Public Safety on November 17. And only allowed it about half hour, 45 minutes. I don't know, this is just my opinion, that he didn't want to say much, so that's why it was quick. Anyway, so this story basically said currently, there's only two DPS, Department of Public Safety, PSAPs, and PSAPs are public safety. But anyway, it's a dispatch thing. There was four that was owned by Department of Public Safety with the previous administration before Sherman dropped it down to two. With only the two PSAPs, there's a lot of dispatching for numerous agencies. With that, their staffing issues, he says now we're down 82% currently. With that, like I mentioned on our hearing, the budget, the job market, lots of hiring and competitiveness. One of the many issues he brought up is the disparity of the dispatching costs to towns. Currently, there are six PSAP statewide, two by Department of Public Safety, the other four is divided up between the sheriffs departments and police departments. Where they're working at now long term, and he says studying dispatch for past 50 plus years, every recommendation on every study comes back to regionalization of police fire and EMS, almost like a county type wide regionalization. He says to move to regionalization of dispatching, the state would be helping out with operational and financial over a period of time. He used this as an example, so the numbers I'm going to give you is not set in stone. He says the state would help cover the one year cost to move to a regional PSAP. Example he used would say the cost of, say, $5,000 to move our dispatching services to one of these regional PSAPs. The state would cover that cost for a period of one year, may take longer, he said, because it's a rolling rollout throughout the state. He said based on this, they would need legislatures to act on it, and maybe a countywide state tax and not individual towns, so it would be county. He goes on, he says he doesn't believe the cost will be near what the proposed paying that I brought up to you guys in the past are going to be per call. There was a next Wednesday, the 15th, there was a day of chiefs and sheriffs meeting up in Randolph, and Commissioner Sherman was going to be there supposedly to discuss this more in length. But today I started to revise agenda, he's not on. So at this point, I'm not sure where it's going. It sounds like that's going to be their recommendation, that goes to regionalization. He says it's going to have to be acted upon by legislators because there's going to be money for that. So that's the most updated, and he used the example of trying to get this done within the next year or two. I can't really see that happen.
So Randy, what's your opinion? Is this a better situation for us, do you think, than the original plan they had?
So it'd be curious to see what they're going to come up with the cost. As I mentioned, the cost per call, was I thought was kind of ridiculous, you know, because if we were to go over and offer them awards for their call phones, they're going to charge us to go handle their call for them, you know, so that's where that would come in. Part of me thinks the regionalization, if you love this, but you're going to get happy to fire EMS involved, I think in one aspect makes a lot of sense, because now you have, you know, like say, we get called to, you know, say, the fire department gets called to a house fire. You know, nothing out of the ordinary, they get there, now someone's shooting. So now they got to call their dispatch to call the state's police dispatch and say the EMS, get them all going where it would all be one centrally located. So I think there's pluses and minuses. The other thing to remember is even though some people say that we have dispatching free now, we really don't, because we pay that through our property taxes. It's just what would happen, we're going to get twice compared to say a town that does not have police and stuff, so there's pros and cons to it, and we have to really hear a lot more on how this goes, because I have talked to some people out of Dover of the fire and EMS, and they're not for it, so who knows what might happen.
Dan?
Do any of the other police departments have a problem with the price per call concept?
They do, yep, a lot of them do. There is actually, the chief is going to try to get a committee together amongst chiefs to try to present some more or come up with something to, you know, another idea with the dispatching. Like I said the other day, I think you're going to start seeing this is going to come down to down the road almost regional policing too, and this is just the first step, but that's my opinion.
Well, I know you will stay on top of this as you've had in the past, and we'll report back when there's something new to report. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we're going to respond to the letter from the North Branch regarding meter installation. Everybody on the board got a copy of the letter? Well, I kind of paraphrased it last week. I'll read it. Selectmen, this is dated November 16th, which was the day of our last meeting, that's why it was not on the agenda. Thank you for forwarding the letter from your council regarding North Branch Fire District's need to monitor and bill sewer disposal for all users, including the town of Dover municipal buildings. Considering the apparent agreement of your council with our attorney, we require the town to purchase and install a meter at the building currently being used at the Westover Fire Department. In addition, we require the town to schedule the required upgrades at the following locations: Dover Police Department, Town of Dover Offices. We expect work to be completed within 30 days, remember, this was dated the 16th of November, from this date of letter. We will require access to the building to read the meters, read the current meters this week. Please alert appropriate personnel at all locations to grant us access. And apparently, it was detected that the Town of Dover office in early October, the town has made, was made aware of the potential problem and suggested a, to contact a plumber. Please update North Branch on what was found, respectfully Helen Kaminsky. On behalf of the North Branch Fire Department, I mean Fire District. So our council did agree that we should have to pay municipal sewer taxes to the North Branch Fire District. Although we cannot tax them for their property, we can, we will be charged for sewage. So I think Randy, we're going to need to upgrade the sewer meter. They're very expensive from, and you can purchase them at the Town of, at the North Branch Fire District. Rich is going to need to put one into the fire department, which doesn't have any at this point in the building, and we need to figure out what's going on with ours. Here, yes?
We will need a new meter. I think based on plumbers, they looking at it, it's not, we're not losing water anywhere that we can find. So I, we are assuming it's the meter. It's been there for a long time, so I'm just needing a new meter hopefully.
So one more, and so, yes, so I think we'll need new three meters. They are, we'll need to have plumbers install them, so it's going to be a fair amount of cost, and then we all need to budget, I think, I'm not sure, we will ask if they're planning to start this July 1st, that they're charging us, but we'll need to include sewage, and I have no idea how to calculate that. But I'm sure that they, I have no idea, but maybe six months will give us an average of how much usage we are. And it's just all the water that goes down the drain is metered and paid for it, and so we need to make sure those are included in our budgets for those buildings, as will the the historical society, the church, and twice plus. They are all now being required to do the same. Randy?
So is this something that, I don't know, is something just from the town going to take the lead on this for all the buildings to get one plumber to do all the buildings and have it done that way?
I think he's.
I remember when I had to get it front of my house, I actually had to contact a plumber, and they went to North Branch and picked up the meter, then came and installed it, that's all we had to do. And Sarah was just going to mention, because we both look at each other, you don't get charged with those down the drain, you get charged.
That's what comes down, I know, I know. So the fire department could be able to.
So just speaking of that, and I'm sure Travis, Dave, when you look at that entire plumber, we do want to make sure if we can put a bypass, especially for the fire station, also the police station, because they wash their cars, they wash their vehicles, we should hopefully not be paying for that water that's going to park them on. So if you can do, hopefully it's something can figure out, I know I was talking to Rich, they use hot water, so that may be a little more difficult, but whatever we can.
Yeah, I mean, what we put on the garden down here, everything that comes out of that spigot through the pipe is going to be charged.
And you are allowed to have a bypass.
Randy's on to him.
So one other thing that Joe mentioned, and I can't remember the cost, because it's something that I looked into my house, because prior to this, I had one of those, and with the amount of water, you know, pressure washing debt, that, I can't remember how Linda worked there, but the cost for me to buy a new meter and have that installed as well, the amount of water that I was using did not make sense. So I'm just going to make a recommendation that we can get the fire department to agree at the end of this town building, that if it is that costly to put in that, then my staff then can go over to the fire department and wash the cruiser, if that makes more sense than trying to lower the cost of having bypass.
That's a great suggestion, as long as you all play in the sandbox together.
I have no problem.
Okay, Dan?
One of my friends and customers, the Blumenboots, have a bypass, but they made them put a meter on the bypass, as well as a meter on what is just being used in the house. So it's kind of like double metering.
Depends on if they have, they might be paying for water, and so this is all just sewage.
Well, the North Branch only does sewage, so via water, but so we need to get this done. Travis, or you, can Dave orchestrate this for us in the three buildings? Okay, I appreciate that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, definitely see what the cost is on a bypass, and if it's prohibitive, like, yeah, we'll figure it out, but we need to, we need to comply, so, and away we go. Does any board have any other ideas of, I mean, I don't know what else we do.
I'm going to stay, I'm going to assume and hope that they don't do it until July 1st.
Well, right, yeah.
There was an indication.
Next startup their fiscal year would make sense.
There was an indication of that at the annual, at the continuance of the annual meeting, but there was not, there's no way to guarantee that, but they, that was the lean that was going on.
Jeanette? So, well, actually, we should put the meter in, so we know what we're using, so we know how to budget. I really feel that we should put it in. So then we have six months of really. Some numbers, yes. But, and so I think that that will help us, because we have no idea what the charges could be. All right, thank you Travis, thank you everybody, all right. New business, Town Hall freezer and the front door lock. The freezer has come around already. Yes.
Actually, to pick the front door lock out there, good news, because he was not able to. What happened was he broke off in the lock. So which is magic, and it is all set. Bad news is the Town Hall freezer has quit.
Same manufacturer as the fridge, right?
Yeah, well, yes, yes and no. As far as I, I thought it was, and I looked back, which was purchased. Even though the booklets I have say it's a Supera. It's the refrigerator, this invoice says it's a true, it's on the door, we can freezer, so. So I'm confused, because the booklet I have downstairs as well lists them both as Supera models. So in any case, it could be a true model, and definitely could probably have somebody come and fix it, or do we want to?
Dan?
They were the same model.
Okay, so have we had any repair work done on this freezer? Yeah, yeah.
The issue is the heater is right next to the freezer above it, so when it gets cold, the hot air blowing onto that side of the refrigerator. I've seen it in the past, but the setup is ridiculous. Equipment's never going to last the way that. I'm surprised we don't have fire suppression, because that commercial range gives off 130,000 BTU and a little fan in the ceiling, in the wall rather, there's no protection for the building, for my concerns for the building, besides moving the equipment part of the rack.
So Jeanette, is it a one-door freezer or two? So a single door? How much does that freezer actually use at the Town Hall? That's what I was thinking.
The ladies who were baking pies, they actually had them in there when it quit. So they were able to get out quickly. But other than that. Because just because of the situations you've been going through, there hasn't been a whole lot of, you know,
I guess the big thing probably with the freezer too is, is that when it's not being used, you probably don't need to run it. So we're running a freezer with nothing in it, which is not good for a freezer, period. So we're probably burning out our freezers because of improper use of not using it. So it's just a combination of things, I don't know what the solution is.
Dan?
Most economical kind of freezer to use is a chest freezer, which uses at least 70% less power. And every time I've been in there, the only thing I've ever seen in the freezer is ice. So I think if we had to.
Small chest freezer.
Small chest freezer, that's all you would need. You wouldn't have a problem with the fan blowing, it would be much more an investment.
The other thing too is I don't know how, you know, if it's not being used, we could just open the, I don't know.
Unplug it.
It uses next to nothing. If it's not being used, if it's a chest freezer.
I'm sure that's being used for ice for events, events like that, and a small chest freezer would certainly accommodate them. Yes, so.
So are we talking about trying to investigate repairing what's there, or just giving that, giving up the ghost on that and going with a chest freezer?
Giving up the ghost on that, Sarah?
I think so, I think it's over what we need in the building as well. I never have seen much of anything in there. So maybe we should investigate getting a small chest freezer. They're very, I mean, depending on what grade we go, they're very inexpensive, some of them.
$500.
Yeah. So does somebody want to make a motion to, oh, Travis, sorry?
Just a quick question, if the only thing in that freezer is ice, do we have a separate ice maker that is used?
No.
Then maybe a small on-demand ice maker for those events, if needed, would solve the other problem.
People bring their own ice.
That is, at least sufficient device.
We don't need any more things to bring.
Right, yeah. They bring bags or blocks and stick them in there, and that's what's the most. And we have pies in there. So it does get used for things besides, and it's just mostly ice. So I guess, Jeanette, if you do that and bring us back some quotes, we'll figure out what we want to do. Sound like a plan?
Do we have any recommendations for around the size we're looking for?
I think.
Well, size, measure it out and see the size. Just bring that one in.
They go from five to eighteen. I think, I think Jeanette can come back with a, with some recommendations. All right, next item, economic development, economic development budget. Yes, you may, please.
Okay. We'll start at the top, go through?
Let's go.
Okay. Payroll, revenue, rather. So we upped incoming revenue from 1% this year to 500,000. That is probably lower than what we're actually going to see come in, but we wanted to be realistic and not, yeah, we wanted to be conservative. We didn't want to overshoot on.
I was just going to pass them out to the public while we're talking about, so I can see the numbers. I don't want to see it. It's kind of like a.
I have one, hold on, I forgot to have mine online, so.
Does anyone else want, Jim, that paper?
I'm here, give them.
Well, just because it's a lot.
We can share.
I have it online, okay.
Here's another one, here's another one. Eric, here's another one too. Okay, so we did, I see the revenue, yes?
Yes, so, like I said, conservative there. Based on what we just saw come in from the past quarter, you know, we obviously could see a lot more than that. We just wanted to make sure we were staying safe there. Any questions? Payroll, 3%, pretty much across the board there. Did you see life that?
Actually, medical insurance, did you take that down?
Take it down.
Because our medical insurance is down 7%, our premiums.
Okay, we will do that.
Isn't that correct, Jeanette?
We'll update that. Yeah, so that, the bottom here, I believe, was their formula is based on what happens. So we will take that down, but other than that, any questions on payroll? Admin expenses, same as last year, we're not buying any new computers or anything like that. We don't expect to spend that much, it's just the line in the budget. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Pretty much everything through business development is going to stay the same. Obviously not expecting that restart Vermont grant again, but I would ask that if you come in, obviously we'll get added into the actuals afterwards. Hoping not to have to provide COVID-19 assistance again, but, so it's not in the budget, but yeah, any, any questions on business development? It's pretty much the same. Okay, beautification, again, pretty much nothing has changed. We just signed a contract with Boyd's to continue the barrel plants and all of that for the next few years. We had, we did have a discussion about, you know, trying to revitalize some type of holiday bright lights program and just couldn't find, we didn't think that there was enough success with the previous program to merit us trying to do that again, and couldn't think of what else we could be doing to to brighten things up, so that is also not in the budget again this year. And then flags and banners, that's specific to there's, there's money set aside in the broken down budget for Bytown marketing for banners that are the same across both towns. This $5,000 is specific to Dover to cover any holes that wouldn't be covered in that Bytown.
Eric?
Yes?
So flags and banners also covers things like the bunting at the park and on Town Hall, things that Jeanette replaces yearly as they're needed, and we did put aside money for seasonal decorations, we just didn't know how to specify that, so that's the next line for you.
Thank you Shannon. So there you go, any questions on beautification? Yes? We are. We are, so there's, right now around town, you see, you still see a lot of the discovered Dover VT banners and a lot of the older banners that we have that are not those are, you know, kind of tattered and torn and not really worth hanging up at this point. We were asked basically by Bytown to hold off until we had those mutual banners, but we are at a point now where those will be coming, as well as banners that are specific to Dover as well. Most likely at this point, because they're on this budget, so they'll happen after July. It doesn't probably make sense to hang the summer. Most likely at this point, because they're on this budget, so they'll happen after July. It doesn't probably make sense to hang the summer ones. Maybe. Yes, yes.
Well, what I think that's us is we're not changing out or putting in banners.
We can, if we have, if we have the winter banners now, we can absolutely put those up. For this season, because we're, we're not, we're not, no, we're not buying new banners tomorrow to hang up for this one. So if, if Rich has. Those winter banners, those can absolutely.
I have a comment. Um, there's been a request at a meeting that we update the war, the memorials, that for the war memorial at the town hall. What is that?
It is not, so that.
What is that?
That program was, um, Shannon, that's the benches, correct?
No, there's the benches here too.
Yeah, I, I don't know what that was. That predates both of us.
Okay.
I, I think it was.
For the war memorial?
Yes.
We were thinking that was for the memorial plaques on the benches.
No, those were, the benches were paid for by the people who wanted the benches. And, and, and so the benches could have been, I mean, you can only have so many benches, but they, they actually were income.
Okay.
The memorial, I don't know if this is supposed to be the war memorial, but I know that's something that we should probably be. Actively trying to put together a subcommittee who wants to, and I know Linda Holland was the one person really pushing for this. And it's been a, you know, we spent a lot of money on, at the town hall. Memorial area to revamp it for the bicentennial. And I think that it's something that we should, because now it's about ten years later and things are, you know, it hasn't been updated. There's a. Empty stone there waiting for a plaque.
Okay, so.
Probably not much this year, something to start, you know, just do some.
Okay, so maybe put seven hundred.
Yeah, something, some expenses that might be incurred.
We'll put a thousand dollars.
But if we don't start updating, figuring out how to update the list and that kind of thing, it's, things will be lost.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Shannon, did you get that?
I was just asking, because the barrel, the barrel thing is actually come, it came in over budget. Should we be revising the number?
No, so that was a case where the year before, uh, when Shannon started, she found a stack of unpaid invoices. Which ended up spilling over into that following year. So we will not, um, end up going over that one, five thousand dollars. Any other questions on beautification? Marketing, okay, so you see. Two thousand dollars last year for web hosting, and that's minus a hundred percent for this upcoming budget. We'll see that moved over to telecommunication. Yes, telecommunications, uh, web hosting is the five hundred dollars from last year, plus the two thousand dollars we moved from that line item. Other than that, so do it's the same.
Do it advertised and no one utilizing it?
Yeah, that's advertising.
That's for us advertising that we are doing.
It's the yard signs that go out for do it program recipients.
And, and with the number, Shannon, those signs are still in decent shape, right?
I ordered them last year. Um, we might just need a few for this year, but I don't think so.
Okay. But the, the rebates are the same, um, task is the same. We've still not come close to hitting that number, so I think that's a safe number to keep that at. Uh, if there was, you know, really expanded usage on that, that's something we could talk about, but at this point, I don't believe. Raise that. The welcome center advertising, uh, we put the money in there. That's something that we really need to. Figure out whether or not we're utilizing it to its full effect. Because otherwise, I mean, that's a lot of money just to have, you know, if it's not, if we're not taking full advantage of what we're paying for, then. Do we keep doing so?
So we don't, are we doing anything there now? For instance, we're not doing anything there now, right?
Uh, no. So I think.
I know, I know that I walked in there, we don't have anything.
We don't have anything right now. I think the idea, right, I think the idea. Prior to last year was that we were going to start doing it again and then COVID hit and they actually shut the welcome centers down. So we didn't buy into that.
So they're open now?
They are open now, um, but it's something that, again, I just want to make sure that we're gonna get, if we're gonna spend that kind of money.
Try and get a better placement, right, Dan?
Yeah.
Yes, the other thing too is you, you might look at, I mean, there's just. There's the bank and one too, and I know that's a lot less expensive. It doesn't have nearly the amount of foot traffic.
Right.
But it might be, I don't know. You can ask, it's very hard to get a, well, maybe you have a lot, getting ahold of someone to actually talk to you about the program.
Actually, it's not too bad.
Well, ask about the bank and one, you know. I noticed that we really, everything in the bank and. More focused, well, it's quite a bit of this focus, like you want up seven where nothing.
Yeah.
Well, the new discovery maps for the valley are in both right now.
I think it would be worth asking them, you know, if they have any kind of updated, um, travel numbers or anything like that to give us. So that we can make a more educated decision about, you know, how many people are actually seeing what it is that we're putting down there. That's, yes.
What about some takeaways, some little pamphlet or something that you. I always find that whenever I go in touch with my wife, there's a pamphlet on the guy on the side.
Yeah, I think that typically that was, um, the chamber guide, because even though not every business was represented in the chamber guide. It still had, uh, a, a very good representation of what was available throughout the valley. That, um, may or may not be happening, so we can absolutely take a look at, um, you know. You know, focusing mainly, focusing on Dover, um, and, and putting something together.
I think I had five thousand of those cards stored at the Valley News, because there was no place to store them. And eventually gave them to somebody from the economic, uh, economic, our economic development department. They, they were immediate, I mean, they just didn't go.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, it's something I can look into. Uh, signage, the same. The business paving project was in the budget for this year. We weren't able to establish the, the ground rules for that. We would like to do that. Forward, and we may even do that in this fiscal year, uh, coming into the spring with the money that's in the budget for this fiscal year. Uh, but we would like to keep that, because once we do get it rolling, um, it's, I think it's something that'd be beneficial and can be done outside of the desk or the doing program. Uh, implementation of marketing plan, see a thirty point six seven raise. Um, that is due to us going through the plan that was given to us by Charette. Looking at the year two budget and cutting that number in half. We don't expect to be utilizing each of the recommendations from that year two budget. But we wanted to be on the safe side to say if we did all of the recommendations from year two, we're looking at ninety eight thousand dollars for the marketing. Any questions, uh, going through marketing?
Trails and path.
Trails and path, um, all the same, coming all the way down through. Until we hit trails maintenance. So we had fifteen thousand in last year. That was for. The bulk of that was for the replacement of the boards on the green bridge here on the paved section of the trail. Um, so we would still like to do that if it's not done in this fiscal year. That's why the money is rolled over and then we're also adding money. For trail maintenance, um, you know, whether it be, I, I know there's. Shannon and I had this discussion this other, the other day. There's always kind of been that discussion about, you know. Whether Rhodes was responsible for paying Dave when he's doing trails work or whether, you know. If he's doing specifically putting hours into trails, whether some of that money should be coming out of our budget as well. Um, also, you know, the, the number of volunteers for trails, I, I don't know, because of COVID or, or other things going on. The, the volunteer number seemed to be down a little bit, so we wanted to be on the safe side so that if we had to bring somebody in to take care of some of the projects. Or, or maintenance that we're talking about, we can pay to do that. Does that make sense? Perfect. Um, we did not do the fall cleanup this year, so that has been removed from the budget. Is that something you'd like to see us doing moving forward?
I would like to ask the school.
Okay.
I think that's something that, like, Greenup Day comes out of the school quite a lot, right?
They, they run it, we fund it.
Right, let's see if they want, see if they would have an appetite for participating.
Yeah, I think the idea of this, the fall cleanup was just to try to get ahead of it a little bit. Yeah, Shannon?
So the fall, the first time we were requested to do a fall cleanup, it was by several members of our Greater Trails community. Um, that thought it would be a great idea and we set one up and then nobody volunteered for it. Um, so we didn't try it again this year. Um, but I think it's something, I know there's smaller groups in town that would be happy to do it, but I don't think it's something that we as the town. Um, need to organize, just because those that asked for it, um, didn't take part.
Fair enough.
Thanks, Shannon. Any, uh, so then.
I just, I, I do like the idea of that fall cleanup. I get, I think the previous year. Um, I don't know if that's when you were talking, talking about Shane, but like, it just kind of got like a late start on it, I think, and, um. It was like really, it's like snow before we even had the opportunity to do the cleanup, but I think it's a good idea, so maybe give it another shot if. Yeah, I, I think that's. The school's willing to do it.
So it's not really the school, so Greenup Day is a statewide program. It just happens that Laurie O'Hern is our town coordinator and she runs it out of the school. Um, but I, I just don't know, maybe if there were some volunteer groups that also wanted to head it up. But we set it up as soon as it was asked for, um, and unfortunately I only had, I think, two or three takers and one of them was you guys. So, um, I just don't know if that's worth our, our time to help.
I mean, for two hundred dollars, if you want, we can keep it in the budget and try to get an earlier start on it.
I'm concerned about the effort if there's not gonna be a lot of interest in it. Maybe Scott wants to head it up. Yeah, he's shaking it up. We'll put two hundred dollars in the budget. There you go. All right.
Perfect. Um, the trails and recreation implementation, so this number is the same as last year, however. A much clearer picture this year of what that three hundred thousand dollars might actually cover. Um, based on the preliminary budgeting for the completion of what the Trails and Recreation Committee. Has looked at for Horace Hill, and obviously this was from in front of you guys for approval before we move forward. Um, for everything we want to do up there, we're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On the initial implementation of the park on Horace Hill. Uh, which would be trails, biking, this, all, all the things that have been discussed throughout the, the plans and, and Trails and Recreation Group. Uh, this also takes into account, if we do not for any reason, uh, receive the money for the Ursa grant. To go ahead and, you know, that's about twenty-four, twenty-four and a half thousand dollars to complete the project at the town forests, which I think would be. Absolutely monumental for that space up there, so we'll, I wanted to budget to do that if we don't end up getting that grant to take care of. Uh, any questions there? Uh, wifi zone gateways, um. I think Tabby and I had had a discussion about this last year and we haven't moved forward on any of it yet, um, but that money's staying in the budget, so that's to. Take a look at the public gateways that we have and make sure that, um. You know, all of the, the hardware that we have out there is still adequately working. And also the possibility of adding more hardware to expand that. Um, web hosting, again, that money came out of that. There, uh, on the last page. And then the bandwidth upgrade, um, we figured because. The CUD has kind of taken over that, uh, expansion of, of fiber and things, you know, in Dover and beyond. Um, that having that money in a wide item on the budget didn't necessarily make sense for this department anymore, you know, we're working closely with them, obviously. That line item didn't need to be on there anymore. Any questions on telecommunication features? Okay, events, um. Exactly the same, really hoping that we, you know, can push some events through this program this year, especially if COVID subsides a little bit. Um, and get some events back at Dover. The parade should be coming back as it was, hopefully bigger and better. Wine and harvest fireworks, all, all of those things. Any questions on events? Okay, you will eventually start to see this, uh, these bottom events here with their own line items will drop off. Because now they're all under the umbrella of events that we're budgeting for them now.
So do we? So like for the blueberry parade, which was like, oh, only, do we spend money for them?
Not this year. So we're in the process right now, uh, the reason you're not seeing, we're in the process right now of going through what they presented to us for costs. And, and matching that against what was originally approved by you guys for the event. Because this year was different. It was supposed to be a block party, not the parade. So we got a list of, uh, or we have a pile of invoices from them. We're just trying to double check that those match up.
So there will be numbers of actual.
In the actuals, correct.
For wine and harvest and for.
Correct, absolutely, but we're just trying to make sure that those invoices match up to what was originally approved by you guys when those are. They are coming. Uh, beyond that. Shannon, the five thousand dollars for Dover Park, that's for, um.
Just general replacement of things like mulch and the swing mats and stuff like that.
Concert expense, we left high this year because we, we had a meeting the other day with Kevin and talked to him about. Um, you know, the, the possibility of booking. Um, bigger bands, um, you know, keeping the budget where it is and also the possibility of pulling that program back through the winter again. Again, should COVID subside, I don't think that's something we're planning on doing for this winter, the hope is going into next winter that. Get back into doing at least some of the winter schedule again. Um, we don't need to build across town land again. Uh, any questions on venue or recreation?
So, just looking at actual, so you've spent. At the park thirteen thousand, you budgeted, so you're hoping to do more with that next year. At the park, uh, with bigger bands.
Correct.
I'm just, you know, the number's high and.
It was, it was budgeted high because we had a full year slate and then that got cut in half. By COVID, and then we had a lot of summer cancellations that first year, so it's. Still budgeted, assuming we have a year round concert series and a full summer slate. Um, but we did ask Kevin to try to make these a little more event oriented and not just a habit. Um, so that we have some bigger name attractions to come, um, so they're a little more well attended.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Taking nothing away from anyone who's performed for us in the past.
No, you, 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 if you have a program that is doing well and well attended. And it's bringing people to the valley, you only want to try to increase it until it maxes out its size. If we're not maxing our size, then we should try to increase that. So that people are coming to the valley.
There'll be a few less dates this summer, um, only because of conflicts of other things happening, so we decided. Um, not to have a concert the night of the Blueberry Block Party. And, um, Labor Day weekend, and then I think, um, the July fifth, I think is maybe the other one, July fourth. Um, so just to try to make the weeks that we do have them their own standalone destinations.
There was the splash as well, Shannon.
Oh, yeah, splash.
So any other questions on venue recreation? Okay. Uh, and then lastly, added, uh, or, or kept the fifty thousand dollar line item for implementation of the Housing Master Plan. There are no current plans for that fifty thousand dollars, um, but if one was to arise, we want to make sure that we have that money budgeted. Any other questions on the budget?
All right, we need to go into the board of liquor control. Second by Joe, all in favor? We have a first and third class. First and third class, license with Southern Vermont Hospital of Health DVA Black Diamond Bar and Grill, formerly Nosh. Jim is here. Hi, Jim. Jim is here, hi Jim. Is everything set with this?
Uh, yeah, uh, we haven't, I am from the, uh, the Fire Marshal. Well, I've left him a couple messages, he hasn't come out and given us a, an inspection yet, but I have had Russ from Green Mountain Fire come out, make sure everything's up to date, up to, uh, you know, fire extinguishers, the extinguishing system, all that, I just haven't heard back from Brian yet, in regards. There is a new one, maybe that's why I haven't heard back from Brian.
So, uh, Jeanette, I believe she gave you the, the State Fire Marshal's Regional Office, which is in Springfield? So, um, that's strange. Is this normally a problem?
I had Brian's card, I called.
Oh.
Card.
So, uh, maybe you need to get the number from, from Jeanette to call.
I can look that up on the.
Okay, so, um, we can't really approve this, because it's pending inspection, we could do an approval pending inspection. Randy, do you have any issues?
So, I make a motion that we approve the first and third class licenses for Southern Vermont Hospitality DBA Black Diamond Bar and Grill, subject to approval by the Fire Marshal.
Any discussion? All in favor? So, we're gonna sign this and hold on to it? Okay, okay, you're okay with that?
Yes, absolutely. Inspection, I'll get that report to you.
Okay, great. Right. Okay, I need a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control, so move. All favor, aye. Okay, the consent agenda, we need to approve the minutes of November 16th and December 2nd, 2nd was the budget meeting.
Do we have the same, we're the same people at all? Okay, so I make, so we can, I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th and December 2nd.
All, any corrections, changes? All in favor? Aye, aye, for Scott, too. FYI, we have capital budget meeting on Thursday at 3:00 PM right here, right now, so everybody be there, oh, and we're going to try to get a picture. Uh, so if everybody could be here, maybe we could do it outside if it's nice. So we could take our masks off. If everybody could be here, uh, that would be nice, because it's, they need it for the website, and also Jeanette would like to open the town report, so. And most importantly, the Holiday Craft Fair is at the Dover Town Hall on Saturday from 9:30 to 3:00. Get all your Christmas shopping in one, in one spot, and one-stop shopping and all locally, all locally made, yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Fundraisers. It's a place to be. And are you, are you going to require masks? Well, I mean, we, we kind of said it. Yes, we, we said it at events at the town hall, when we first went into COVID, it was really based on the, the event organizer, what they wanted. So I think that.
This has the potential to be a close contact kind of.
Great, well, hopefully it had a good turnout. Yes, Eric?
We missed an FYI getting it to Jeanette, and it's, uh, there is a Trails and Recreation Committee meeting next Tuesday night at 6:30.
Okay, Trails and Recs, Rec next Tuesday at 6:30. All right, any liaison reports? Seeing none, we have to go in, we need an executive session for personnel and to discuss potentially hiring an assessor's assistant. So, we're gonna go.
Once we go to a regular session?
7:25.
7:25.
Second? Second? All in favor? Aye.